Okay, excuse me. Well, at least it's nine o'clock, so we'll call this regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court to order here on the 10th day of November 2025 here at 9:00 a.m. at the courthouse. We'll all rise with invocation and pledge.
Dear heaven, Father, Lord, let us come to you, thank you, Lord, for all you do for us, Lord. We just thank you for the cool weather we've got, and just ask you just to continue to watch over and take care of us, and, Lord, just give us wisdom that we need to do the things for the county that we need to do. Lord, I just ask you just to be with those that have lost loved ones or who may be sick today, that watch over and take care of them. Lord, just take care of our servicemen and women, watch over and take care of them, bring them home safely to us. Lord, we just thank you again for all you do for us, ask you just to go with us now and forgive us where we fail in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number one, public comments and requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551.042, the Texas Open Meetings Act. Have anybody that's wanting to speak this morning? Move on to number two then. Considering possibly approved the minutes from the October 27th, 2025 special meeting of the Commissioners' Court.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parchman to approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Ah, ah.
Carries unanimously. Number three, considering possibly approved, moving the $320,000 of funds minus the $5 wire fee received from Nett RMA for the transportation priority project to the road and bridge. Jimmy, this is yours, you want to talk about it?
Yeah. I just think that, I know we all could use more money in our road fund and all, and this was set up as a transportation project and all when it was brought to us, and I just think it needs to be put in each one of our funds equally.
I wasn't here when this all went on, so did the money come out of y'all's funds for that project? I thought it was a loan that y'all borrowed money from.
No, it was, they just, they just agreed. Nett RMA agreed to give us this money to help with the project.
To help with the project?
Yeah.
But y'all borrowed the money, correct?
Yes.
Right. Okay.
Well, the money was paid back, the general fund was paid, I mean, that's where it come out of, the general fund, right? It didn't come out of road and bridge?
Hmm, I'm not for sure exactly where it did come from. I can't, can't remember right off the top of my head where it came from.
And then?
Do you know?
The right question today.
I should choose, I'll agree.
The right away project was set up in Fund 75, which was funded through a debt project to the county with facilitation from road and bridge and assisting with the project as well as purchasing the property. We had a third-party company that came in that bought the property that was setting up the right-of-way, and so it was a combination of a work effort, but the funds were set up as a debt on the books.
So a loan is basically what you're saying?
They set up a CD back in 2016, I believe it was, maybe 2012, even earlier, and it was set up in a fund for that, yeah. So they're, I'm assuming from the way that the books were reading that it was a debt on the books.
So a loan, this is?
I wasn't here when, I don't know if they were a loan or if they took general county money and set up a CD. I'm assuming that it was a debt that was paid back through, over a period of time. All I can see is where they set up a CD for 35, for 3,500,000 from the general fund and set it over there. So I wasn't here when the transaction took place. It could have been a loan that set it up, or it could have been a general county item. I would say on the books, it was set up as a CD when I came in.
This was a, from what I can think, it was a grant that, because it was in, set up in, on the books whenever I took office. It was like 4 million in there, and part of it was part of the loop, the way I understood it, and then it was Tech Dot, I mean, this was a Tech Dot project, and they're the ones that funded everything except we had to buy all the right-of-way and all of that. And it come out of that, that 4 million dollars that had been, been set aside, I don't know how many years ago, back in, I think it was 2004, when that was set aside for that.
I think that was in 2003. I don't know, I wasn't here, I think it was 2003.
It was either 3 or 4 when that was set aside.
My understanding. Yeah, I just, I want to know where the money, if it come out of general, I don't see how we can put it back in road and bridge, but if we don't know, we don't know, so.
Well, I make a motion that we-
It wasn't in general, it wasn't in government, that's why I'm saying it was all set up in a specific special tax.
I understand that, it's in 75 for that fund. I just want to know where the money came from. If it come out of road and bridge, then we need to put the money back in road and bridge. If it come out of general, we need to put it back in general. I don't-
I would feel that the funds, when they set up in a special dedicated fund, it's a collective decision that's made by the court to set the money over there. I can go get the file that I have, I can bring that with me, hold the numbers for you guys, on all the expenditures, on the, basically, my date, something we started paying out of it. It was originated a long time ago, then they started, they started buying the property, they started paying out of it. And then we closed that fund in 2024, and then the money that came out of that fund, 100% of it, came back to general county that we spent on the road and bridge project. When this money came to my attention, I was told that it was not part of that, and that we, it was just a reimbursement grant, that we had to show the invoices that we paid and then it would be reimbursed back to the county. I believe that how the money is devised and how it's looked in the records is really difficult for collectively to make that decision.
I'd just like to know where it came from, if it come out of road and bridge or come out of general. I don't know, I wasn't here in 2003, I don't know what Judge Leingam did to that, so I'd like to know where that came.
I don't know, I, I make a motion, we move it into road and bridge.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parker to move it into road and bridge?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewatt. We've got, before we vote, we've got Mr. O'Connor that wants to speak on this matter.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. I'm Jerry O'Connor. I just have a few questions that I would like to get some clarification on this, because I was kind of surprised when I saw it come up on the agenda to move so fast with this grant money that was, that had come in. So is this the normal process on a budget line item, basically, to put money in without actually adding it to the budget first? And if so, where's the transparency in that budget process? We deserve transparency on all of that stuff. So maybe it matters what account it came from, but it really doesn't, because all of the R and B budgeting comes out of the general, because the general's worth deposited into by the taxpayers, correct?
I can answer that question.
Okay.
Whenever you have a non-budgeted revenue item, then it has to come through court and has to be received in by court to be receiveded in. That's why we put it on the court agenda, because it was an unbudgeted revenue.
Okay.
So anytime you get an unbudgeted revenue for full transparency, we have to put it on the court and receive it in, because we didn't have that knowledge at the time of the budget.
That was received at the last Commissioners' Court.
Yes.
Now we're talking about moving it to another account, from general to roads and bridges. So let's speak a little bit about the budget real quick. Did any of the precincts return unspent funds from roads and bridges last time? Because if that's the case, why are we wanting to put more in roads and bridges? Is it to cover special projects? If it's to cover special projects, I've been sitting in the audience, when you bring a special project before Commissioners' Court to be voted on, to be funded out of the general fund. So are we preloading roads and bridges on stuff that's not already in the budget and accounted for, and what we want to do in this next fiscal year or not? And then finally, I would like to get a little bit of clarification on the basis in which we believe it probably should go into the roads and bridges. Is it because it was founded upon a project that was roads improvements? Now, if that's the case, let's go back and look at the grant return and see if it was ear-tagged to go back to roads and bridges, or should it really go into an account that's interest-bearing until a project comes up and you come and present for a project to get funded for?
I asked those questions when-
I understand you did. I want answers from the why, from the Commissioners and the judge, not necessarily how we're shuffling the money, but why we think that's the best way to go, rather than doing an interest-bearing until you need the funds in roads and bridges. Let's, let's put forth a budget that was just finished and voted on, enact that budget, go forward with that budget, and when budget changes need to be made, let's do it in accordance with the way we normally do business. That's the right way to go. Thank you.
I'm going to tell you, you know, I asked for money, and it like, it's like pulling teeth the last time, and I had repercussion against it, and, you know, when we got a catastrophic deal, we need the money right then, not wait six weeks after we go vote on it. But, you know, I've been through it, and I had roads that I've got repaired, but if they had one bad incident, then I'd have no money left.
But if you have it in the roads and bridges fund, you still got to get permission to move that much more over to your project.
That's what I'm saying. I done, I did it that way, and I had, you know, it was like, it just had a, like a road block, and I don't think we should be able to do that, because when you need the funds-
You did receive the 200.
I did, but it was like a road block, though. Because I was, you know, it was, it didn't, like, I didn't need it, but I did need it to just to even finish out the year-end. But, you know, this money is, like I said, it's a transportation deal, and I think it needs to go in the road and bridge fund, because we, every bit we need, because our material is so high, and it's getting outrageous.
I totally understand.
And I can't do it without money that I don't have.
There are other avenues in order to say, let's call an emergency meeting in order to fund those emergencies that pop up. Thank you.
I'm going to tell you, Jerry, before you go, I want to tell you that I, the reason I've got money carried over is because I didn't get the projects done partially because of the rain and stuff that we had in the spring. I didn't get started on my projects until later on, and I didn't get all I done. I've got another five and a half miles that I wanted done this year that I didn't get done, and that would have took a big chunk of what I carried over this year for that. So I just wanted you to-
Did your carryover stay into your roads and bridges, or did it go back to general fund?
It stays in.
Okay, so anything, anything that you carry over, you can now enact in this fiscal year, we're good with that. There's that extra buffer so that you can go on and do those things. I'm still a firm believer in that if it wasn't in the budget, if it wasn't a project on the books, put it in an interest-bearing account, and then when an emergency comes up or a special project comes up, you either call an emergency meeting of the Commissioners' Court in order to get it funded and run through, or passed over, because there's other things that are on the book. And I'm not saying that there are other things on the book, and I'm not talking about repercussions or anything like that. I'm really talking about transparency to the public. That is the normal process, as I understand it, to run budgetary issues within the county, so we should not be straying from the normal process. Additionally, just because it was through a transportation grant, we hired an individual or a company last year to write special grants for us. If you're wanting to say that transportation grants go to transportation and other grants can only be ear-tagged for those other things, then that's money out of the general fund that you can't get into your R and B later on. Let's not, let's not just close that door on other items that need to be, or the future when you might need more as well from other grants. Just because that was the basis doesn't mean it was the ear-tag.
You know, we, we had a grant writer come up here, and we spent almost a year, spent, and she did not do anything for us. We paid her 45,000, 4,500 a month, and we had no grants to show for it.
Was there no?
They was talked about, but it just didn't, didn't fold, because it wasn't filed right.
So there were filings, they just weren't received, approved, and came to fruition. Because there's a huge difference between, I have put in for grants, hundreds of grants. I have been successful less than a handful of times.
But, you know, this here was sent in, like we were supposed to, we got all the numbers, and we still said, well, you're too late. And you pay this people 4,500 dollars a month, they ought to know what they're doing.
I don't disagree, but there's an avenue on that to go back and say, you didn't do your job.
Because I-
We shouldn't be paying you for the job that you didn't do.
Because I have trucks that are wore out, and I was planning on getting those grants, and we hurried up and get all this, and then the next thing we knew, well, we filed too late.
I would, I would, in that case, as a businessman, I would be looking into why I'm paying a employee or a contractor to do something that they failed to do, and then put the hurt back on them where it belongs. Or was it an in-house, we didn't get data for that individual in time?
Where the data was there. They had all the, they had-
So they failed to perform, so they shouldn't have been paid, paid for performance. That's, that's a totally separate issue.
And they're no longer with us?
Right.
Thank you. Thank you, ask you all what you carried over. Jeff, do you want to answer? I don't, I mean, it's got those numbers, someone gave you those.
Well, a lot of this is, I wouldn't have this money if it wasn't for Aqua Funds, and I haven't spent all my money like Jimmy. There's some projects that I haven't gotten done, completed yet, and there's still equipment that I have not bought yet that I still need. Now, I don't know what, I hadn't got a chance to sit down and look at this number yet on this, so officially, want to know what my fund balance is after, after this year, Manette, after 2025?
Are you on it?
Okay, that's the one that highlighted in green?
That's, it's-
Okay, it's about what it was last year, maybe a little less, about 418,449.06, is what I have in mind. But what I plan, that likes to do, it tells us to keep about 25% in there at all times for emergencies, and I just don't like to run mine down.
But that's your fund balance you're talking about?
Yes.
What did you carry over? He asked what we carried over.
And I like to say, I haven't, I haven't-
Well, he reduced his fund balance this year. He didn't carry, I don't think, on that one. 2025.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to look at this.
The sheet that you give me shows 70,000 in precincts.
He started, he started the year at 427,000 and he ended at 418,000, so he used some of his fund balance this year. And then I can, is everybody else?
I did buy a truck, and I do have other trucks I like to buy, so I, like I say, there's still a lot to my plate that I haven't done yet.
They all asked for use of their fund balance, some of them didn't use at all, because they had leftovers on.
They had some leftover, like 70-something thousand in one precinct. What I'm showing is we've got 70-something thousand in Jev's, we've got 238,000.
And two, he gained, he went from 269 to 285, I don't necessarily, so his fund balance has been below in this precinct, not a lot, but a little, and then in precinct three.
Mr. O'Connor asked for what, what they rolled over, not their fund balance.
Well, when you roll over and fund balance-
It goes into the fund balance?
Additional fund balance. So if he started the year at 269 and ended it at 285, he would have gained about 20-something. If he would have went down, he would have went lower. So he used some of his initial fund balance.
That's the question, so we just got-
Precinct two, he not used some of theirs, and then I'll go to precinct three, is that-
That's what he's asking.
Yeah.
Okay, precinct three started with 269, and now 285. Okay, I'm sorry, I, I put it wrong, precinct two started the year with 133,000. I like for them to maintain 25% at all times for emergency situations, but the true cap is around 100,000. We always, we do not let it go under that. We like for them to always have about 25%.
When you, when you say you like to, there's not a statute by that, it's just, that's your recommendation.
It's kind of a county policy that we don't let fund balances fall below 25% just for planning and budgetary purposes.
I'm just asking a question.
And so we kind of do like a hungry, because in the past, you know, we kind of fell in here, nobody's ever been over that, and you're getting in a critical situation at that point.
And I understand that, and I think it's a good policy to keep at least 10%. When Word was here, I think it was 10%, and now you're saying 25. I just don't know that there's a statute.
My experience has always been to use 25%, but it doesn't mean I'm going to start looking at it when it's 125, because it can be 100 really quickly.
But, but not a law, just, Manette, what you want, what you prefer.
It depends, of course it was.
I understand, I understand that.
It's a policy across the board. Now, if Tides County called in a fund balance policy, they had a fund balance policy, it would take a lot back on historical data of the way when Carl was here, we always fell off the 25%. When Barbara came, she kind of gave them a different value. I just kind of say, I'm not myself.
And I like that, luckily.
Which is not a problem. I'm just asking if there was, if there's a statute for that, or if they've had that in the Commission. I know when Mr. Hockaday was here, when, when he came in, there was no money, because they spent the whole deal before he got to office, and he came into your spot, he came into your spot and had zero money because of, I'm not saying that's not a bad, a bad idea, keep the money there.
I came in, didn't have a whole lot when I came in, in fund balance.
Sorry, sorry.
No, you answered, you answered well.
You're, you're, maybe it's both are open, and anybody, you could get a copy of this if you ever wanted one.
If I can speak maybe to clarify what Judge was kind of trying to say, that a policy is not the law, a policy, that the way you're using the word "policy," it's good business practice, and he wanted, he would look for clarification between the two.
And my clarification on that is, we do not have a special dedicated fund that's aligned to road and bridge like some counties do, where the specific percentage of your tax rate goes directly to road and bridge, you can never move back to general county. Once it's in there, it's in there. Our road and bridge fund is 100% of the tax base by a percentage based on like the court decides every year. So the money can move there, and the money can move back. It can move, they can, they can fund their fund balance back, but in some counties, there is a regulation, there is a rule, where if you vote it in, a special dedicated rate that is associated with that. We don't have that in Tides County, so when you're saying that it's a decision that the court makes on how they move that, and I just stay standard with what the court has done in my time here. If they can vote at any given time, a county can put into place what they call a fund balance policy, and once the fund balance policy is originated, voted on, and documented in the court record, that's when you cannot move those numbers, because they're wrong. Did I answer that correctly?
That's what I was asking. So, also, Mr. Coburn's not here today, so I don't know if any of y'all spoke with him. My understanding through TAC is if you change, change the budget, then you have to have a special, special budget, special budgets amendment, which would be Section 110106. So I don't know if we can legally do it without a special budget. I don't know that we can just move the fund. So with that being said, without legal, I don't want to get nobody in trouble, so.
There's not one for revenue. It's like we could, we could budget-
Right here, it says, and, like I said, I'm not the lawyer, I'm just asking, and I don't think you're a lawyer.
Because we're not, you're bringing the revenue in to the fund, the same as we brought the revenue last year, 075, so it's not a restatement of the budget, because I didn't budget this recent year. I just received it into that line.
Says here. Like I said, I would like a special, to get John Mark to call, TAC, whoever want to call. It says here under special budgets, 111.0106, special budgeted money for grant or aid money. The county auditor shall certify the Commissioners' Court the receipt of all public private funds, which is what we did last week. If you'll let me finish, I'll finish for you. The private grant of money. It said, that is available for this, for fiscal year, but not included in that budget for fiscal year. On certification, the court shall adopt a special budget for limited purposes and or spending of the grant and aid money that is intended for. So I don't know that we can do it without a special budget.
But I was told that this was not a grant, I thought it was a reimbursement for a project award that we received from Nett RMA, and when we, when we evaluated, because I asked if it had been a special dedicated fund, I asked all of them, and I was told of the people that originated the grant, this is a reimbursement for expenses that they paid, and that we had to justify those expenses, and that it wasn't a grant, and it didn't need to be set up as a permanent special dedicated fund. If the, if the reasoning behind that is different, I'll go get with John Mark. If it is, then I would put that in a special dedicated fund. I asked those questions on the receipt of the money, so I felt that all my office had to do at that time is to declare the receipt of an unbudgeted revenue, which you can-
Which is what we did two weeks ago, and that's what we did. I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing that part with you. I'm just making sure that we do everything legal. I don't want to get anybody in trouble.
Did you contact TAC on that?
I contacted TAC, and this is the information they sent me. I thought John Mark would be here today, and he could duck with them. I don't care. I moved 48,000 dollars over to every Commissioner as our, in our budget. We moved 48,000 over for everybody, and if everybody had something left over, we take this money, get Dana to put it in a CD and enter a sparing account, then if we have something come up, like Dana's did, we move it over there, and we have a special project for it. Do you have projects that you want clarified, that you want to? If you'll excuse me just a minute, Manette, I'm, I'm speaking, and I'll let you speak when you want to speak.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. So what I'm saying is, if you've got a special spot that you want it, like Dana said, he had, how many road miles was it, Dana, that you had?
Eight.
Eight miles of road, he come, he got 200,000 dollars, and then we added 48,000. If you've got something to do with it, I think, as Mr. O'Connor's asking for transparency, instead of just putting 80,000 dollars, less than 5%, if you know what you want to spend on. I don't have a problem with the Commissioners getting the money for the road. Do you know what roads you're going to put it on? Are we just going to put it over there? Are we going to carry that over, because it got wet? Are we going to spend all our money this year? I don't think we'll fix any roads until later. I don't know, I don't do roads.
I got, I got.
I think it's too cold right now.
I got a mile and a half, we're going to chip sale Thursday.
In the cold, so?
No, it'll be cold, it'll be warm, because they're supposed to be warming up by the end of the week.
Like I said, that's your deal, and you've got the money to do that, so.
Now I do.
We've got, we've got a motion made and a second, but we can vote on it, or we can get another motion to table it. I just would like to make sure that we know exactly that we're doing it legally through TAC, and so that we're not moving something over without even a special budget. We set the budget, and now we're already changing the budget in the middle of the year. It's not like moving funds around in a budget, this is changing the budget, so, but that's what you want to do. We've got that, we've got a motion and a second. Don't want to vote, we vote. If there's not a motion to table, we'll do what you want to do.
I will rescind that motion that I made, and make a motion that we table it until we find further information on it. find further information on it.
Okay. Well, we got another, I don't know how we rescind these motions. He's rescinding his motion from that, so we'll need a second on him to rescind his motion.
Second.
We got a second on his rescinded motion to table this, till we get more of the further legal detail. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All ayes? So we'll carry unanimously. Let's table it till we get with John Mark and TAC. Number four, approve oral and written reports of county officials.
Make a motion, we approve them.
Got a motion laid by Commissioner Parchman to approve those oral reports of county officials.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All those opposed? Number five, consider and possibly accept the treasurer's report as a matter of record.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to accept the treasurer's report as a matter of record.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parchman. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All those opposed? Number six, approve budget amendments. Ms. Nanette? No budget amendments? We'll move on. Number seven, sign and pay orders and approve payments.
Make a motion, we pay our bills.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Parker to, to pay our bills.
Second thing.
Second. I don't know who hit it first. We're gonna, I'm gonna open it back up to two bidders. I got Jeff, and I got Dana.
It don't matter.
Second by Dana Applewire. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
All those opposed? Number eight, closing comments. Jeff?
Yeah, I just wanted to tell Nanette, I wanna say thank you for all you do. I really appreciate it. Thank you doing a heck of a job. Thank you.
No comments.
I wanna say, uh, say thanks to our veterans, cause it's Veterans Day tomorrow, and I do appreciate everything they've done, and, uh, they sacrificed all, you know, I appreciate their service.
Jimmy? Okay. Uh, we will have a, a special meeting, uh, on November the seventeenth. That'll be next Monday at nine o'clock, and that'll be to canvass the election votes, uh, for the amendments that we just had. And, uh, we've got, Mr. Bunce, you was Marine Corps? You just in the service.
My brother was.
Brother was in the Marine Corps. I know that you was working on a lot of that. We've got three servicemen here today with us, and we appreciate all their service, and of course, today is, uh, Marine Corps Day, uh, birthday, and we'd like to say that thank you. Uh, it doesn't go, goes unsaid a lot of times. Uh, we get the freedoms that we live in today, to stand and say the prayer, and, and pledge our flag, and to live our lives that we live, because of the service that y'all gave, and we certainly appreciate that, and appreciate all our veterans, so.[1782.87]